The meeting at the zoning board of adjustment of the city of Elizabeth will now come forward. This meeting of the zoning board of adjustment of the city of Elizabeth will be this Thursday, 8th day of March 2012, as the rule I apply in accordance to revision of the Open Public Meetings Act. As a regular meeting, you know this is a set meeting, it follows the Star Ledger of January 27, 2012. And the notices of the case will be heard regardless of how long it takes to start. Have these ten days before today.
Vice Chairman Kappa.
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Silva. Commissioner E. Commissioner Kapavas.
Aye.
Barbara Dixon. Commissioner Connell.
Aye.
Commissioner Galvez.
Aye.
Chairman Riz.
Aye.
Please stand in the presence of the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
Is there a motion to approve or deny the minutes of the regular meeting?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Sir. Motion by Commissioner Castro, second by Vice Chairman Kappa.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Commissioner Kapavas.
Kappa, do you have a question?
Oh, I'm just sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The resolution, application number Z-1611, signed on February 9, 2012, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Vice Chairman Kappa.
Which motion is this, Mr. Chairman?
Application number Z-1611, address would be 233 Dashwood Street, 39th Road.
Sir, now I ask that the second by Commissioner Castro.
Full motion, please.
Vice Chairman Kappa.
Vice Chairman Kappa.
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapavas.
Aye.
Commissioner Galvez.
Aye.
Chairman Riz.
Aye.
In regards to resolution number Z-0112, signed on February 9, 2012, Lyndon Lee Kelly, the address is 1902 Avenue. Do I have a motion?
Oh, well.
Motion by Commissioner Castro, last second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chairman Kappa.
Vice Chairman Kappa.
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapavas. Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Chairman Riz.
Aye.
Before starting proceedings tonight, I'd like the gentlemen with the video camera just to identify themselves and let the audience know where you can find these recordings.
I'm Richard Wall, and the recording is available at youtube.com/ElizabethReport.
First matter reported for this evening will be the Z-0212-142, 333 Broad Street, JP Morgan Chase, 333 Broad Street, A. Stilton. Would you state your name, your address, and your birth date? Right. I know.
And Eric is a very good person.
Oh, I thought I should have said that.
Yes.
You said Thomas.
I know.
Is that, is that?
Yes, we have.
Vice Chairman, for Elizabeth, an application from the F. Page Board of Chase, about a bank, Chase Bank. For a sign, they're located 339 North Royal Street, please corner of Royal and Hill. Now pointing at a park of salt water, you have three whole barrices that Chase is requesting four. One is for a tight design, perhaps, because the building was a Buick dealership. They showed in glass, place the signing areas, where the signing is held at 15'11" and only at 16'10" on Broadway. Therefore, our sign is permanent in Elizabeth, permits 14' height, whereas the area that's created in the building is one foot. Two foot ten inches higher than the building is, higher. The F. Page is simply trying to do quite a sign where the signing area is a building. In addition, the applicant is having an excellent sign height of 38 inches, where the mid is 24 inches. That's what I'm saying here, it's about 24 inches. But as this event will explain, the sign pattern of the sign can, is what creates the different, the accurate size of the sign in the apartment for Elizabeth. And finally, this is a private building, and the applicant is requesting a sign, a logo on the cavity for Chase. And finally, as part of that request, the whole parish, the grand, the Ace Grand is known by the octagon, which is a logo that warrants all their branches. And they are asking for permission, perhaps, additional logo sign, for the campus. To that, I'd like to introduce an affirmative explanation to the parish, whole parish. And, this then, please tell the court, my relationship is hard to get the signs for the Ace Grand.
Okay, I'm sorry, sign industry. NW Sign Industries, for over four years now. During that time, the entire time I've been working with Chase on all new builds, and I've done...
I'm not talking with Morgan Chase.
JP Morgan Chase.
Yeah, yeah, I know, you're kind of a guru.
Oh. Okay, okay. Basically, the entire time I've been doing Chase new builds, all of New Jersey, New York, Connecticut, and the entire state of Florida. And branding every single site specifically.
So you were basically handling, designing, branding with Chase brand throughout the work.
Yes, that's correct.
Specifically, working with Elizabeth, sorry. The signage that you're proposing, is it in accordance with what the brand has other Chase and Ashley drivers, or at least Eric?
Yes, that is correct.
If focusing specifically on the whole parish that you're requesting, could you explain to the board, the barriers provided are sign heights 38 inches? And the sign height requirement of Elizabeth's control, would you please explain how that can add?
Yes. In the code, it counts the actual pan as part of the sign. And the pan is actually three by two inches. The letter sets itself is only a foot, 128 inches.
This then, it's 24, you mean, if all of them show up, it means a pan.
If you see here, this is actually the pan itself, it doesn't eliminate.
So the rectangle area that fits into the sign area on William is going to refer to as a pan?
That's correct.
And individual letters are what?
They are 28 inches.
So the individual letters, if they were fixed to the sign area, they would certainly be in compliance with Elizabeth's ordinance. But the reason that you are, you sign on the, you chase, are placing a pan in sign area is why?
Well, because the access, each individual letter has its own wiring. And the access in this area is very, very limited. So in order for the letters to actually go into space, they have to hold the electric underneath the pan.
The pan functions to hold the electric, wiring, and connections that will allow each individual letter to light.
That's correct.
And that's the reason why we're at areas that are the requirement of Elizabeth's ordinance.
That's correct.
Okay, will the octagon also be?
Yes, the octagon will also be eliminated, and along with the letters.
Yeah, we can mark that, because they're in the grid for your package. It's already there. Turning to the next parish in regards to the height, you located these individual pans, Chase, name, octagon, logo, and the sign area on the building. Your experience of science, is this the logical place to go on a building?
Yes, this is the most logical place. As you can see here, there's no additional room for a letter sets.
You were not told the signs, so they would be in compliance with our Elizabeth ordinance. Where are the signs, in the middle west, or down on the west?
Yes, but that would actually make it fine with Eric.
Okay, sure.
It would not, it would not comply with Eric.
And you were also requesting an additional sign above the front door of the cavity, and I guess a smaller version of our octagon there?
Yes, that's correct. It's a bigger version.
That's because the building is a re-signed building, technically.
Yes.
And the entranceway is on a small point in the prime of the building, and it will have the octagon above the cavity of the Chase on it.
That's correct.
Question to the second?
Vice Chairman.
Vice Chairman Kappa.
The page is not really, I'm sorry, the page is really important for someone to get your glove off, just hold this up here. Does this something, the actual color?
No.
Or are the actual colors in there?
The actual color of the pan is going to be nickel, and this represents the color.
All right, will these lights, in any way, be flash in any time?
No.
Steady?
It's a steady illuminated sign, and the illuminating doesn't stop. And they have a timer.
All right, so the base on these letters just level logs with plastic letter level?
Yes, that's correct.
Is that the same for the logo that you're reading on the front?
Well...
A base on the level?
No. And the reason for that is, as I said earlier, the letters each have its own electric. So that, as both of this octagon has its own electric, but it's only one electric feed.
And these are the same type of signs you're using on every side of the building before you have that code?
Yep. I should say yes.
Question? Stand in the walking area, and would you be, signage in this area, or this building is primarily here?
That's correct.
Do you find anything that the case assigned that would be a detriment to signage in the office group?
No, we do not.
The members of the audience who wish to testify for this application, if so, please step forward, put aside your name, and ask a question. Seeing none. Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, as the applicant indicated during cross-examination, they...
Sorry, George.
As the applicant testified, or the witness during cross-examination, this application is in compliance with the city ordinance. We have to understand that the applicant has limitations to comply with higher due to the architectural design of the building. However, the proposed sign appears to be comparable with the architectural features of the existing building. I am in favor of this application. It would be nice to see that abandoned building become active and alive again. And I am grateful that Chase is considering the location to open a branch. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I agree with my colleague, it's not really asking too much, and it isn't bringing life into that area to the advantage for quite a while. So I am also in favor of this application.
I'm in favor.
Is there a motion?
Of course we do approve this application.
The motion by Commissioner Castro.
He did, I'm sorry. We did.
Do you have any, any questions?
No.
Is a motion approved by Commissioner Castro, is there a second?
Second.
Second, sir, Commissioner Galvez. Have a second, sir.
Commissioner Kappa.
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapavas.
Aye.
Commissioner Connell.
Aye.
Commissioner Galvez.
Aye.
Chairman Riz.
Aye.
Next matter reported for this evening is application of Z-012-142, 333 Broad Street, Trinity Christian Center.
Adrian Lawrence, A.D.R.I.A.N., last name F.L.O. 993 Shackville Road, T-Night, New Jersey. 07666. 07666, I don't want to say it in a nice way.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, please, a second. Commissioner, this application, voided, subsidized, and consisting of two lots. I think it was for approximately 10 years ago, on behalf of the Trinity Christian Center, to have this for approved. A two-family, not gross rate, to be used as classroom space to the Trinity Christian Center. At that time, Trinity Christian Center had, at that location, a school called Trinity Christian Academy. That school has since closed down. And the school would like to now sell that property and return it to residential use. Unfortunately, during the time of the ownership of the building, it was solidated, those blocks, meaning that we took those two lots, made it into one lot. And now you can't sell that property without restoring it to a single lot of the property. The application, voided, seeking to allow us to create two tracks, as they were before, we had this something approved for classrooms. The building right now, there are no activities, no church activities were run at that site. Meaning, we propose to sell the building, exit, and allow us to buy, and then convert it into a one or two-family house, and then, our parents retire. It's a two-family itself, and obviously, we're going to use.
I serve as the Director of Administration. Just over a year.
And the 35th, the southern, the regular track, is that right?
Correct.
178th, the front of the wall, and the street across from the 7th and 4th, the apartments on Broad Street.
Also correct.
And the portion of the track, running on Broad Street, consists of two-story building, which is only used for classrooms, basically, is that right?
Correct.
This building is present, and they can investigate more.
Correct.
There is no church used on that site?
No.
And as I stated before, this was previously a two-family house, which the church had a purpose, and for which the church retained those orders to, in your classrooms, basically, is that right?
Correct.
Now, what precedent did we give to the church property?
We continued all church services, not the week.
And it was a time when the church had a institution called Trinity Christian, is that right?
That is also correct.
And the school logo functioned at that site?
Correct.
And you know about when school, the season existed?
At the end of, not this current school season, but the prior.
Do you know why it stopped functioning?
We weren't, we were no longer able to sustain the school because of the inability for some of the parents to, to tuition.
Is that due to the general...
Correct.
So the church decided that it's not financially beneficial to them to continue through that type of operation at that site?
That's right, it was financially, it hurt them.
And it has the church decided that it starts a time when it's going to be, you need to worry about that, plus, they are forced on Broad Street.
Correct, I know, it's a big issue.
And I say that it's the church's intention to close the property, as is, it's all to a church, who then, he's the property owner, is one of the, the house, and so, it's going to be tightly, relatively, in exile.
That's right. That's right.
And should be more improved, so we should be using that property as a social community? Is this your side?
Correct.
Okay. There are no changes being made to the church property anyway?
Not whatsoever.
I, you're made it to the property sold, I don't know if that church has a, you guys have that?
Correct.
Another question, Commissioner.
I have, uh, I have some questions. Actually, the first one is a certification that I would like to get from Mr. Galarraga. In, in, in the, in the first part of his review letter indicates that in nineteen ninety-nine, his board approved, uh, an application, uh, for this parcel plan of the property that was there to be converted from residential use to office and classroom for use by the church, right? Mr. Galarraga, okay, now, in the zoning ordinance, uh, it indicates that the subject property is located in the R two, two-family residential shop. Educational and religious facilities are not permitted to use in the R two shop. Therefore, a use variance is being requested for modification of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
I'm sorry, thought for the?
Therefore, a use, a use variance is being requested for modification of a pre-existing non-conforming use on the application that was approved in nineteen ninety-nine, right?
Uh, that's right.
The application indicates that the two-story frame and brick building on Grove Street will be converted to a two-family use, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry, I thought you were still talking.
Yes, the application indicates that the two-story frame and brick building on Grove Street will be converted to a single-family use.
Well, the, I guess I should clarify that the point that's in R two zone was originally a two-family house. We're selling it as, as we don't particularly care to what use the buyer puts it. People either have to convert it to a one or convert it to a two, either one of those, uh, either that development does not require site technical rule, do not require running for either, or it's almost like they're required to be constructional for it and have it been permitted in use themselves. So, in essence, we don't really care what it's going to be converted to, other than the fact that we want to subdivide it off, and whoever buys it will have to comply with zoning laws, which is either one or a two-family house.
If, I, the question, Mr. Galarraga, is if we approve this application, will the office and classroom uses be suspended?
Oh, absolutely. We're, we're abandoning that use and we're seeking that it may be restored to a residential property, either a one or a two.
For what you want to do for?
Exactly. No, I, I understand the point, but we, we're not selling it off as classroom space and office space, it's being subdivided solely for the purpose of residential use.
I understand.
It's, it's, on behalf of the city, for that, the residential use is more granted.
Thank you, Mr. Galarraga.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, starting to draw a bit, so you're applying. Are there any plans to do any renovation to the building that you're planning on?
My understanding is that it would be given to the church right now, we just need to, to sell this property, well, whoever buys it will have to restore it to its original or to a?
What kind of shape is it in?
It's a board, uh, sort of a board.
It's, it's a, for me, we had, we even had, um, security system on it. We simply moved it now, because we no longer have a use for, uh, the, the bones are fine. Apologies. Uh, the, the framework of the home is fine. Um, when we renovated it or changed it into a school use, that was simply knocking some walls down, opening up some of the areas to allow more, uh, flow. Uh, if, if a buyer chooses, they'll be able to simply return, uh, some walls and knock down the walls, return the bathrooms if they, uh, if they like.
I think garage, garage.
Correct, we, we, we're simply using the basement at this time, where the garage area would be as, as storage.
It wouldn't take much.
A garage, when you have a apartment, garage are converted into a different use?
No, they just, I'm sorry.
Where they converted into a different use, other than the garage?
Uh, I have, the garage area.
It's still a wide, by close off, meaning that there are no, uh, retractable doors, if there were retractable doors there, they would be able to, um, drive against that area. It's, it's not as if walls were put up in the area that's currently around. Okay.
It's not like it's, it's closed off.
It could easily be returned for, for, absolutely not, it's still wide open.
Thank you.
It wouldn't take a question.
Mr. Chairman, another question, uh, do we understand that you bring it back to the original subdivision residential? So today, today you have a building there that is a mixed use or is a?
A non-conforming use.
It's a non-conforming, but it's an approved, non-conforming use today. But, but in front of the board today, you're, you're, you're trying to obtain approval to re-subdivide it back to its R one, R two zone.
That's right.
So, whoever purchased it, obviously, if it's a one-two family house, it's okay to say, otherwise, you would have to make appropriate applications.
You'd have to come here, it's gonna be getting eaten out of.
Okay, understand.
I'm okay with that. I'm interested in the.
Commissioner, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is a, 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 yes, we did. So, if you're ready with a track of land on Pennington and Grove Street, Pennington, as I testified earlier, is a church, um, covers the Pennington Street predominantly parking. And on Grove Street, there's a lot that was the church property, that had been a residential property that was converted to a classroom use and office use in the past. Now again, we'd like to subdivide that lot back off and return it to its residential use. Um, the only variance that it's, is created, um, it's a listed, but there's a lot depth. The, on the first page, this is G zero, zero, zero. On the upper left corner, there's the owner information. And we look at Pennington Street and we look at Grove Street. Uh, we look at Pennington Street, that's essentially the church that we're looking at, I mean, basically, all conditions there exist in, without changing anything at all on church property. When we look at Grove Street, which is kind of the middle of the shade, um, there's a variance for lot depth. The prevailing lot depth on Grove Street is a hundred and eighty-nine feet and this plot is not that deep. Um, so that... What happens here, we have a lot depth then of eighty feet on a lot, I guess we call it lot two. Um, and because it's, it doesn't make prevailing, it's a variance. It's something we can do about it, we can't, there's no additional land we can buy, because the church property is right behind it. So it's pretty much in a distant condition and it can't change.
And, 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 sure, to say that back in nineteen ninety-nine, this project came into war, that variance existed then also?
Correct, it's suspended ever since, this land was subdivided many years ago.
Excellent, variance, second question.
That's right.
Uh, well, should work with this subdivision, will it have any impact whatsoever on the church property or the parking or any other church activity?
No, the, the church parking, uh, which is on Pennington, is not really the live one that I property. So removing that seems, is not moving the parking from the church property.
And returning this property to residential use on Grove Street, potentially any of the four, it's a, it's a?
Correct, uh, Grove Street, globally, is residential and this just returns that use from that property to residential use.
And also cancel property?
Correct.
Uh, on the board of this application, will there be any negative impact on us having this, before this being done?
No, I don't see any negative impact at all.
Is this a, is this a, is this a, is this a?
Yes, it is.
Nothing for this, Chairman.
Any questions? Commissioner, what?
I have a question. The, the proposed subdivision lines that you have on this church, G zero, 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 are these the original subdivision lines that existed back in nineteen ninety-nine? Are we following same order?
Most of, most of the board. Go ahead.
Would retain any point for district, on to Grove, all this, so that they have access to church property from two points? Because this creates problem for all churches and, 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 so we have to maintain twenty feet for drives, so it's middle of the maximum essential that they provide the flowers as per, under the maximum.
Are there any members of the audience who wish to testify regarding the application? If so, you step forward on the line, say your name and address and record. King, um, devil.
Mr. Chairman, this is a very simple, uh, case to defer to the former use. I mean, those gave problems, and we're going to locate the area. I'm bringing up the video.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion, Martin, Mr. Castro, is there a second? Second. Second, by Mr. Castro. Uh, thank you, sir.
Hi, Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Commissioner Pinedes?
Aye.
Commissioner Castro?
Aye.
Commissioner Carr?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Seven minutes.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Yeah, no, we have to stand on the record, so a lot of them, yeah, no, I guess we'll just, off the record, um, I just handed out to everybody this evening, uh, the decision we just received from the court of the T-Mobile, or the city of Elizabeth, zoning board. I just, I, I want everyone to see the decision, uh, basically, the court, uh, first, this board and ordered the issuance of the use parents, both parents, and their entire site then, for the, uh, mobile tower that they wanted to place on, uh, the Atlantic, uh, Lanin Street. Uh, the court ruled that there were not sufficient, uh, basis for the denial of the use parents, both parents, and that as you know, towers are, uh, you know, permitted under the Self-Communications Act unless there are some, you know, overriding circumstances that, uh, would, you know, obviate against the tower and, and, you know, she just basically ruled that they had to put in sufficient proofs to support location and the tower, that there were no other locations, which of course would go forward saying, they really didn't, you know, submit those proofs, but she said that, you know, there was no evidence that they, you know, didn't try to put the towers on themselves. And, uh, so when the court asked that, uh, I guess I'm, I'm going to communicate with the attorney for the, uh, T-Mobile, that they have a resolution, uh, you know, granting their variances, I will let, place on the, next, uh, so I just, you have any questions? You know, if you can look at the decision, it's pretty, uh, uh, if you have any questions?
I have, I have some questions. They, they filed a motion to vacate our decision, am I correct?
Well, so return on the, aye.
So, we, of course?
Oh.
Okay, because if, if you don't mind, I'm really grateful. If I, if I see the actual, uh, motion, you know, their argument, uh, and what our position was to oppose?
Dragon, did you have your vote?
Yes, because I had the order there and in the order, the judge is using, uh, her language, but I'd like to see what the position of the applicant was, uh, to file it, to request, uh, our decision to be reversed, and, and what our argument was, uh, to, uh, eh, to oppose, uh, the position of the, of the applicant.
No problem, I can send it, uh, if anybody else wants it, I can make it available to Mark or, or anybody that wants to get, but also George, I'll send you, uh, copies.
Because it was evident, it, it was evident, it was clear during the hearing, uh, the scout that the applicant hired to find the property, he was lying. He didn't exercise his due diligence to find, and, and I understand, the decision is a decision, we cannot appeal a decision from a judge, but at least we would like to know, uh, eh, so that next time we're better prepared.
Absolutely. Can you get?
Yes.
Anybody else wants, if I can send the copies to, I'm going to scan it, email it, so my copy's got. Any else? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Castro.
Yeah, yes. Well, just, sure. Uh, we just, the board has to, um, make stream and hiring, hopefully our term for the next year, we have a resolution, it's the same terms as we used last year and, um, so I have a resolution which just basically says that you're going to hire Mr. Palmbek for January one, two thousand twelve, seven, three, one, two thousand twelve, that's the term, the contract, the board, and, 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 all the same initial terms that we had last year, years going back, so I would just ask the board, uh, make a motion and, and, and roll around that.
I, I'd like to happily move your motion to approve, uh, by the board.
Uh, a motion to approve by Commissioner Castro. I, I believe all commissioners should have the copy of that resolution from them.
Uh, I, I'm going to, to Mark and to, I was just, it's just, uh...
I think Commissioner Fernandez has requested, I'll talk about it. No, I, I move a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Castro, is there a second?
Commissioner Fernandez?
As soon as you say that, I think I'll...
Yes, yes. Second by Commissioner Fernandez. Last, second, sir.
What's your plan, Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinedes?
Aye.
Commissioner Castro?
Aye.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Aye.
Commissioner Carr?
Aye.
Commissioner Galvez?
Aye.
Chairman, yes?
Aye.
Who's standing to give the motion?
Uh, second by Commissioner Fernandez.
Thank you. Do you mind if, why would they like to come?
Motion to, to the chair.
Motion to return to the next, the next minute.
Motion, to the chair.
I have other questions, I think. Are they, are they? Maybe it was, 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 maybe it was,